Okay, okay. Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and call to order the City of Bella Vista Planning Commission meeting. If you can call the roll, please.
Ellis?
Here.
Farner?
Here.
Klassen?
Here.
Sedgley?
Here.
Portillo?
Here.
Dool?
Here.
Floyd?
Here.
All right, I'm sure we have a quorum. Next up, we have our public meeting minutes from July 10th.
I make a motion, they be approved as submitted.
Got a motion from Farner?
Second.
Second from Portillo. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, meeting minutes are approved. Next up, we have our public input session. This will be an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the planning commission for any non-published item, and also for, it looks like we've got a few waivers in large scale for the Lees or Reeves office building, if you would like to, if anybody would like to make a public comment about that, this would be your only opportunity. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close our public input session. We have nothing under unfinished business. Next up, we have new business. What I would like to do, if I could get a motion, is we started at our work session having an open discussion on how we interpret septic systems, specifically the hard line between septic tanks and leach fields, and I think if we could finish up that discussion and give direction to staff, that might take a couple of our variances off our agenda tonight. So if I could get a motion to move that from open discussion to the top of our agenda, I would appreciate that.
So moved.
Got a motion from Sedgley?
Second.
Got a second from Farner. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, Taylor, if you would go ahead and restart the conversation concerning how we interpret septic systems and setbacks.
Okay, so currently, our zoning code 109186 sets zoning standards for septic systems in Bella Vista, including setbacks. However, zoning code does not define what a septic system is, and so historically, CDS staff has just followed the ADH definition of what a septic system is, which is the tank and beyond. So that includes the tank, the hard line between the two items, and then the leach field. However, since it's not defined, in our definitions code, as a zoning, you know, authority or administrator staff is able to adjust those interpretations to match best practices or what have you, this staff is basically curious, and, you know, open a discussion with you guys as a planning commission, and you also sit now as the board of zoning adjustment, kind of oversee the zoning chapter, if our interpretation needs to change to where we only include the tank and the leach field and the setbacks, and then the hard line between the two items no longer apply towards the setbacks essentially. So that way, we would only be overseeing, from a zoning or setback perspective, the tank and the leach field, and then just basically consider the hard line as a plumbing line, which we don't oversee in the zoning code. So, that's the open, opening to that, and really just wanting to collect your guys' thoughts, and open discussion.
Yeah, I'll add to that a little bit. There were several of us that were on a call with the health department, I guess, was it a week ago, Taylor, maybe a little bit over a week ago, and we asked that very question to the health department, and they did not seem to be that concerned, they didn't seem to be concerned at all about the hard line specifically. You know, the leach field, you want to make sure that it's not leaching onto other people's properties, that's why you've got the setback, or that the foundation of the house is somehow impacting the functionality of the leach field. Kind of same thing goes with the septic tank, and so, it's a structure, and I'm making sure that it's not encroaching into a setback. But as far as the hard line piping and routing it across common property between one lot to another lot, health department didn't seem to have an issue with it, and we even had one two cycles ago where the health department had approved it, but yet we denied it because it was technically a variance. And if we do choose to vote tonight, to have direct staff to interpret that code differently, that one we did deny two months ago will be approved. It will automatically be approved because it would no longer, it would no longer be needing a variance. And then also, the one we have tonight at Scalloway Circle, essentially, their variance would become null and void also because what they're asking for a variance on would no longer be an issue either. So, kind of with that, we'll open the floor up to all the commissioners to have a conversation and, yes.
And I will add too, just to add on to that, I also spoke with the ADH environmental manager of Northwest Arkansas specifically about this item, and he had no concern so long as obviously that we waited for their approval of things like this. So, I just wanted to add that on there too.
I will say that the POA, their portion of voting on this and going across the common property is, especially with Scalloway, has met all the criteria for the POA. So they voted okay.
Any other comments, questions, concerns?
Not really. You know, look, it's not like these are going through with no approvals at all, right? Because they have health department approval, they have POA approval.
ACC approval.
ACC approval. So, I mean, I feel like, given the circumstances of some of these lots in town, it's just unnecessary extra staff to regulate that line, provided that the remainder of the septic system meets.
Yeah, I think that's something we need to clarify. I've asked staff to actually look at if there are a way to make it more, you know, very clear that getting a variance on a leach field is something that you can't do in Bella Vista. The leach field and the septic tank have got to comply with our ordinance, but...
I guess I'm looking at this hard line as similar to like a main sewer line. We wouldn't regulate setbacks on something like that. Oh, sorry. Sorry. It's like a combination of me leaning back and not talking loud. So, I, what I said was, I guess I'm looking at these main line, or service lines as kind of like a main line connection to a sewer system, and we wouldn't regulate setbacks on those. Just kind of being part of the process.
Linda, Susan, it's been very quiet tonight.
I have to abstain on this issue.
On this one in general?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Put your, it's not on.
Is that better? Sorry.
Wow, I really love it. I can't think of any cons. I've been sitting here trying to think of a reason not to, and I don't have one.
Yeah, I, that was kind of where I was like, are we, are we opening a Pandora's box here or something like that? And just as long as it's very clear, if we put a septic system on a lot, that becomes an unbuiltable lot.
Another thing to think of too, rationale is that, you know, your utilities are 7.5 feet and to the property line, so there's all kinds of sewer lines and items like that that close that cross the setbacks all the time. So that was the rationale that staff had, if that's helpful. This would basically just be similar to all the utilities that go in those utilities. What do we need?
I think we'll do a, I'll take a motion and a second, along with a roll call though, to direct staff to interpret the hard line connecting a septic tank to a leach field as not regulated by setbacks. Does that sound about right, Mr. Attorney?
Not included.
Fair enough.
To consider the hard line as plumbing.
As plumbing.
And no longer part of the septic system.
Yes, as what Taylor said.
Just making sure I understand.
I see that under the case, and legal issues with this, to me, issues here are policy issues, not legal issues necessarily. So that's why I'm afraid to confirm a comment, and I'm not going to pose an opinion on that. Other than to say, just for information, we need to, and it may be something the council needs to take up more broadly, we are going to start, I think, having houses and three lots down the septic field, and they're going to be running pipes through common property to get into their leach field, which is going to be over yonder. And I think in terms of the city, I think this, to me, that creates all kinds of problems in terms of like bank financing, and I mean, there's going to need to be some check to make sure that when the leach field lot sells, and it has to sell with the house that it goes with, or the lot, you know, that, and I don't know that we've got anything in our code which, I mean, if it's adjacent, we deal with it, but then we're talking about situations which are no longer going to be adjacent, so there are going to be potentially unintended consequences.
Well, I mean, I didn't think that it filed these restrictions. Basically, one lot becomes unbuiltable and...
In order to make somebody do that, we've got to have ordinance or something that requires it. I mean, yes, it makes sense. Yes, it would keep a clean transaction. Yes, it would handle future, but we have to account for the fact that folks won't bother to do any of that. And, and so, just that, again, those are policy issues in terms of the future.
Yeah, and at a high level, at a high level, I mean, we, I was kind of covering this kind of at the end of our meeting with the rest of the conversation with the health department, because there are several other things that I think we need to direct staff to start digging into and seeing if we can get some kind of modifications about other things. I didn't really want to convolute this discussion on dealing with this particular item, because it does affect a couple of variances that we're dealing with tonight.
And then one other thing, in talking staff, it's very unclear, in fact, maybe highly unlikely, that if this is a Bella Vista POA lot, that the ACC would authorize a lot to be used exclusively for a leach field, not in connection with the house. It's not a joint. It's a whole different issue.
The one that we denied two months ago, the ACC had approved that one. Yeah, they had, they had actually all of their approvals in place.
This is a multi-layered thing we do in Bella Vista. It's just another consideration for them.
Yeah, not for us. Yeah, we don't have anything to do with it, we're aware of the ACC. Other than that, we need a motion and a second to move this to change the interpretation of the hard line between the tank and the leach field to a plumbing line.
So moved.
And seconded.
We have a motion from Farner and a second from Portillo.
Does this make it effective immediately?
Where this is just a policy change, so it doesn't have to go through the floor.
Anything, so if we do...
Really what you're doing as the board of adjustment, you are the ultimate interpreter of the zoning code. And so, the staff is the first interpreter, and in fact, there's even an appeal process where that, of course, could come to the board of adjustment for an interpretation of a particular use for conformity with the zoning code. You cannot authorize something which the zoning code prohibits, but you can interpret those issues that may have, may not be necessarily properly accounted for, I guess you could say, in the zoning code. So, that's technically what you're doing as a board of adjustment.
We're clarifying our code. We've had a motion from Farner, a second from Portillo. If you could call the roll, please.
Sedgley?
Yes.
Floyd?
Abstain.
Portillo?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Farner?
Yes.
Klassen?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. All right. Next up, we have item A, zoning variance request 2023-50372, a variance request on the maximum size for a non-revital accessory structure at 7 Witten Lane. Ms. Workman?
Okay, since the work session, there have been no updates to the applicant's scope of work. This request includes three R1 single-family residential lots located on Linton Lane. The applicant is seeking a variance to construct a non-residential accessory structure that is double the allowable size of a non-residential accessory structure that is proposed on an adjacent lot. One public comment has been received since then, and that is located on page nine of your agenda packet. A denial of this request does not inhibit the site's ability to meet the R1 residential intent, so staff is, staff puts forward a recommendation of denial at this time. Happy to take any questions.
All right, any questions for staff?
I have a general question. Where did the 1,200 square feet number come from?
The original intent?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, but I'm happy to research that for you.
Just a question. So if this was on a single lot, it wouldn't matter if it was 1,200 square feet or not?
On a, on a lot with the primary, it's restricted to 720 square feet.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I do have a question for staff. In, in your recommendation, you start out with saying that this is comparable to historical non-residential structure, so it sounds like at some point in the past, this type of thing was approved and done either at a POA level, an ACC level, or before we were a city, or after we were a city, or we don't know, but it seems like this has been a right that's been afforded in the past.
Historically, the previous BGA had approved items. I think it was what you mentioned.
Correct. Seven, seven since 2013.
Seven?
Seven, correct.
Do they have any approvals from the ACC or POA for this building?
I'm not sure. I'll let the applicant come up and speak to it.
We'll let the applicant come up and then, I guess, Mr. Attorney, this, this is a legal question. This is something that's been approved by the BGA in the past, but our interpretation has changed to how we evaluate variances. What say you?
One variance is, variances by nature are unique, so there is no such, well, everybody gets that variance because of their unique nature, so they're individually considered. So that's not necessarily binding in the use because something similar has been granted in the past, because the whole point of a variance is because there's something unique to the, to this particular situation. Now, there can be certainly in the past circumstances where the same uniqueness occurred in the past, and you've interpreted it a certain way, but, you know, the standards, I think arguably, the standards for variance had to change. I think we've just gone back to just saying what state law says rather than trying to delineate individual factors that fit into those. I don't know if I've answered your question.
I think you did. Thank you. All right, any other questions for staff? If the applicant is present, if you would come up and state your name and address for us, and you can go ahead and add on to the staff report, any pertinent information you deem necessary. Now, let's get this microphone adjusted a little bit up. We'll make sure we can hear you clearly, sir.
My name is Roger Morris. My address is 7 West Linton Lane, and...
Can you speak more into the microphone, please?
Yeah, my request is for a garage in a lot next to my home. Really, I'm unable to build on the property that I have because of my engineered sewer, and the big problem is I have a boat too big, and so I want to put it in storage, and that's their request.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Do you have any approvals from the ACC?
I have not. I'm trying, seems to be the first step.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you get a permit for the clearing that was done on this lot?
I have not got a permit.
So you cleared it without a permit?
I have only cut trees. I've not removed any dirt or root balls.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, if you would take a seat, sir, we do have to conduct a public hearing. All right, so this is a zoning variance request. We will go ahead and conduct a public hearing. We would ask if anybody in the public wishes to address the planning commission, if you would come up and state your name and address, and then we will give you up to five minutes to make your comments to the planning commission. So at this time, we'll go ahead and open the floor. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and take it back to the commission. Real quick question, Taylor, what is the maximum size allowed by R.I.A.?
So this 1,200 square feet on the adjacent lot of the primary, and then 720 square feet on the same lot as the primary.
Okay, so if we were building on the same lot, it would have to be only 720 square feet. Okay. Any other, yes, ma'am?
Yeah, I would just like to point out that the 1,200 square feet was put in for a reason. If anybody has any questions about how awful a thousand or 1,200 square foot garage looks, drive down Portsmouth Drive sometime and see what those two structures, which are nowhere near the size of this one, have done to the curb appeal and the value of the other properties on that street. It's been devastating. And now, I realize this is the only house on this particular street, but I don't think that should play into our decision. I think a structure of 2,400 square feet would ensure there would be no other houses built on that street, because it would just really be not appropriate for a single-family residential neighborhood. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Any other comments, Mr.? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve zoning variance 2023-50372.
So moved.
Got a motion from Farner?
Second.
Second from Sedgley. If you call the roll, please.
Farner?
No.
Klassen?
No.
Sedgley?
Yes.
Portillo?
No.
Dool?
No.
Floyd?
No.
Ellis?
No. All right, you are still allowed to build one up to 1,200 square feet, and staff can get with you on that, or, and also an appeal process if you would like to pursue that. Next up, we have zoning variance request 2023-49855, a variance request on a septic system, setbacks at 11 Scalloway Circle on parcel number 16275-10, or 10-000, and 16-275-08-000. Mr. Jones?
Yes, so nothing in terms of the content of the staff report has changed since the work session. We still, as staff, have not received approval from ADH for the proposed septic design, but just as a bit of background, this zoning variance request is on the septic setback requirements from property lines, which we've already discussed this afternoon as far as interpretation changes. But given the current situation, this is an existing home. It's a finished structure. During construction, though, the building was built more than 20 feet farther to the right, encroaching the area that was intended for the lateral field, and as a result, that leach area was compromised, and alternative was proposed on the lot, not adjacent, but adjacent to the adjacent, and there's a plot plan of the proposed septic design on page 21 of the report, which is why this variance spans three different parcels. The first being with the residence, the second of common property, the third of the lateral field. But given that plan, the septic tank would be fully contained within the setbacks, the 10-foot setback on Lot 6, the same as the primary residence. The lateral field would be fully contained on Lot 4 to the south. It's just the hard line that traverses over common property. This proposal's already gone to the POA Board of Directors and was approved on July 28th, but again, staff has not received word from ADH, and there has been one public comment received, which follows immediately after this staff report. But given this, staff still does not offer a recommendation of approval given the review criteria, specifically 1B listed on section 10942. Staff has nothing further to add, but is happy to take questions.
All right, are there any questions for staff? This, this would be the one that we just clarified for staff on how to interpret, so technically, this variance is no longer required, but because it's published and it's on our agenda, we're going to move forward with it and hold a public hearing and let the applicant direct us. Yes.
There you go.
Yeah. Well, you, that's, you know, anyways.
So there's no variance, I mean, public hearing is for variance, variances required.
Correct.
There's nothing figured inside.
I think that's right. Yes, it's wrong.
I was just getting a public hearing, but if some applicant, we did notify the public through different ways for this one.
Yes, is the applicant present? Yes, ma'am. We'll give her, give her a minute to come up here. If you would give us your name and address, please, and...
My name is Anu, and I'm here like on behalf of Mitzi. I'm related to the Banfield and I'm here regarding to the 11 Scalloway, and somehow actually that had shifted and we missed actually how the setback was, and it was missed like from everyone actually on that. So I'm looking if you can just help on this one, or give your kind of recommendations actually, how we can just help on this. House is already built up, and we just need three to four inch diameters, the lines, to the other lot actually, so...
Technically, you no longer need a variance based off of how we've directed staff to interpret the code. So you have the option to request us to withdraw. So you have the option to request us to withdraw the variance request. I mean, there's really nothing for us to vote.
What they're telling you is you don't need the variance to do what you need to do. So if you want to withdraw your application, then you can just go ahead.
Okay, but how we can go and just have the septic going to the third lot?
You still have to go to the POA, ACC, and the Health Department and the city staff and get all your permits in place. But as far as this board goes anymore, there's nothing for us to review.
There may be other permits and people you can talk to, but you do not need a variance. And that's the only reason we're here today.
Okay, so you're just telling me I need to just get the withdrawal of the permit?
That's up to you, but you don't need to have a variance. So if you withdraw your application, you can go ahead and proceed with what else you need to do and not have to worry about compliance on this issue because it's resolved. You want to withdraw it?
Not right now, actually.
Okay.
Let's go ahead. I mean, I do know we've got one person in the public that would love to speak. I feel obligated to give them the floor because they may be able to. I understand what you're saying, but if.
Now, this almost can't work. Because now you're going to consider, now you're going to go back and say they might need a variance, but you're going to consider a variance.
I didn't say that. I just, I want to allow, I want to open the floor back up to the public to speak, sure. Because, you know, we did take things out of order.
Open a variance request.
Well, I think as the chairman, I have the ability to withdraw it as well, right?
I'm not stopping you. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks, sir. If you would go ahead and take a seat for just a minute, we're going to go ahead and conduct a public hearing. All right, thank you. All right, at this time, we'll go ahead and conduct a public hearing. If anybody in the public would like to address the commission, give us your name and address, and we'll give you up to five minutes to speak. Yes, sir?
David Todd, 12 Scalaway Circle. My house is adjacent to the lot, not adjacent, it's kitty corner across the street to the lot where the septic would be constructed. From a very selfish standpoint, I would love for this to be approved because that would take the lot right close to me out of any potential building. But I'm very concerned because you're talking about a long tight line across POA property across that lot and then pump back, it's going to pump up there. And you have a lot which they've actually already started clearing before this was ever approved. I do take note, they're from the county GIS. Those lots are not owned by the same person. They're owned by two different realty companies. But I'm concerned about the maintenance of that remote lot or that non-adjacent lot, whether anybody will ever maintain it. Five years, you'll have woody vegetation growing on that. If it's not maintained a couple of times a year, it could become a smelling mess before too much long, before too many years. But the thing that bothers me as a citizen of Bella Vista is this, what it said in your report, that the building was inadvertently shifted 20 feet to the right. Now, I don't know what right is. North, south, east, west would have been much more helpful. But there's one of two things that happened. Either it was a builder's error or surveyor's error, same thing, and it was built in the wrong place, or someone's trying to pull a fast one on the city, carving out a little more side lot for them and hoping to put it over on you and somehow shoehorn a septic system into the remaining area. In either of those cases, either a builder's error or a builder's error is gross incompetence by the contractor. And if they're trying to pull a fast one on you, then it's, I don't know what to call it, shady dealings or something. Either way, if that gets approved, you are rewarding that error. And that concerns me as a citizen. Now, like I say, I'd love for that lot to never be built on. That's kitty corner to my house, but I'm not sure that's in the city's best interest to approve that. Had that been approved beforehand, then we'd not, and with the change you just made in your interpretation of your policies, we wouldn't even be discussing this. But given that it was a builder's error or negligence of some kind, I just, I don't know. I'm glad I'm not in your shoes having to decide this one.
So I can tell you, if you'll hang around to the end of the meeting, we're going to be talking about some of those things that you just brought up.
Okay.
So, because that does reach back to our conversation about what we had with the Health Department, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else? Yes, ma'am. You can go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm Susan Ferraro at 22 Scalaway Circle. I am across from the property, and I'm asking my interest a little more parochial perhaps, but they have taken away at least 20 feet of a green belt that I have enjoyed for 20 years. The lot is way too small for the house that was built on it. Now I am facing basically a three-story wall on the side, and I'm asking if this is approved at any point, if you could put a mitigation clause in there that would allow them to landscape a little more, to screen what should have been there in the first place. I too am concerned that 20 feet is a large mistake and how it could go through so many layers of approval and not be noticed. I'm just shocked. So I just ask that you perhaps attach it to your recommendations if you do decide to approve this, that mitigating landscape would be part of that approval. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Yep, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the commission concerning this request? All right, seeing none, if you would come back up to the podium, please. So basically, there's nothing for us to vote on because we've already essentially removed the hurdle as far as the planning board is concerned about approving your septic system design. And so what you need to withdraw your request because there's nothing for us to vote on. You're basically already approved as far as we're concerned. So we need you to officially request to withdraw your application from the planning commission. Do what? I'm fine.
Okay. So what will be the next step?
Just you call staff tomorrow and they'll help you out and take care of you, but as far as we're concerned, we're no longer a part of the equation.
Okay.
So if you would, if you would say, I request to withdraw my application. We have a request from the applicant to withdraw their application. Can I get a motion, please? Oh, we don't motion? All right, we'll consider that withdrawn, and thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have zoning request 2023-50413, a variance request on septic system setbacks at 80 Dover Drive on parcel number 16-10539-000. Mr. Jones?
Yes, this is a zoning variance and waiver request in one report. We'll deal with the variance first, though. Similarly, the only thing that has significantly changed since the work session is just the interpretation that we've covered this afternoon. Just far as background goes, this is a proposed four-bedroom home, but the septic system, even though it traverses over adjacent parcels, the orientation of the dwelling makes it so that the septic system would traverse over the rear setback. And currently, our zoning code specifically, that allows for side yards and side property lines to be encroached with a different improvements like a building or even a home. That is allowed only for side property lines, so the current orientation limits us on that allowance. And if the house was turned to face the southern edge of Dover Drive, this proposal would be in compliance and the variance would be moot. Given that, the staff does not have a recommendation of approval according to the review criteria, again listed in 10942D, staff would be happy to take any questions. And an important consideration that we found shortly before the work session is that of these three parcels, the one in the middle, and the plot plan is on page 34 of the report, but the one in the middle is Zone P1 Conservation. There is currently accessory structure proposed on that parcel, but that is something staff wanted to note, that on our official zoning map, not all three of these lots are Zone R1 residential, single-family.
Any questions for staff?
Yes.
Yes, sir?
Well, enough of staff. As per understanding of what we voted on earlier, that makes this zoning variance void, doesn't it?
No, this one does not because this has to deal with the orientation of the primary structure, which our code is very clear. It has to be on the side. It cannot be on the rear. Now, we can.
Wait a minute.
I, it's, I know. It's very confusing, but. There's an interpretation that we're able to deal with on the hard line, but we can't make an interpretation because it says very clearly it has to be a side yard, not a rear yard. Now, we can direct staff to go back and look at modifying the code, but that's going to take time.
And that is on the agenda tonight for a public hearing, item L.
Yes, we are going to evaluate at a later time. So we could, we can deny the variance tonight and let the code wander through council and take its time, and then eventually they'll be approved and they can start their home for, from 60 to 160 days from now, however the council decides to take up that ordinance, or we can approve it and move them on forward, but we have a very high standard that we have to look at, and what is the hardship? They'd have a question for staff. Have we determined if the original subdivision plat dictated which road frontage had to be the address side of the house? Like, a lot of corner lots in Bella Vista specify this street the house must front versus this street.
In our code, it's the pedestrian entry.
Well, I understand that, but like the lot that my house is on is a corner lot, so my house has to face Buckingham. It cannot face the street on the side.
Probably because the other lot has a screening easement. Only certain roads have a screening easement. Neither of these residential streets do that dictate access.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? All right, is the applicant present? If you would go ahead and give us your name and address and you can go ahead and add to staff report, and like I said, we're specifically looking for a unique hardship.
Yes, so Melissa Thomas, address 11460 North Edge Road, Pe ridge, Arkansas. On this one, we are asking for a variance. You know, as you asked the question, there was not a direction on which way the house has to face. The reason that we face the house this direction was primarily two reasons. First of all, if we turn the house the other direction so that our line from the septic tank to the leach field is crossing the side setback instead of the rear setback, even though it's crossing in the same general area, that increases the driveway grade for this house and puts it at a 14% driveway grade when the way that we face the house allows it to be at 12%, which is what we're typically asked to do unless we ask for a variance for a steeper driveway. The other reason on this one is we do own the two lots behind this as we have currently proposed to face the house. So the backyard faces Lot 2 and Lot 3, and the septic is back there, and the accessory building is back there. If we turn the house so that we're crossing the side setback instead of the rear setback, then the back left corner of the house is about 16 feet from the corner of the lot that we do not own. So that house then is looking into somebody else's backyard and close to that person's backyard if they build in the future versus looking in your own backyard two lots back. And I understand it's on for future consideration to change the wording of how this one is written to include rear. The challenge that we have on this one is these lots are cleared, approved GEC permit. The easement release was granted by Cooper to do this, and so if we wait for it to potentially be changed by you and then go on to the city, even, you know, let's say the city approves it fairly quickly, I'm going to guess we're at a minimum of three months. I'm going to ask the question, three months out before we can start, and this house is cleared, ready to be started, and has, you know, windows ordered, lumber ordered, because this one kind of popped up at the last minute on this rear setback. We've done a lot of easement releases with Cooper and haven't run into this one before because you don't find very many lots. I know the city shared with me, over 90% of the lots, you don't have a lot behind a lot to be able to even ask for this. So we've probably done 15 easement releases and never run into this one, nor has Platts, who does our surveys, nor has Corbett, who does our septic design. As it's currently drawn, it is just the line from the tank to the leach field crossing.
Any questions for the applicant? All right, this is a zoning variance request. We will go ahead and conduct our public hearing, so if you would go ahead and take a seat for a minute. Is there anybody in the public that would like to address the commission concerning this request? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing, take it back to staff, or back to the commission.
Well, it seems to me the way they have this house laid out and the three lots, that it makes sense to grant this variance. Because I think it would be a real problem if you turned that house.
It would definitely be a much less usable backyard, for sure. Are they going to have to get a variance on the accessory structure also?
No, staff planned on bringing that forward next month to rezone it, to correct it to R1.
Right, but I mean, as far as, I mean, it'd be an accessory structure behind the house versus to the side of the house.
No, since they share a property line, our accessory building code covers that. I did want to clarify something, Ruben, if you could speak to maybe the driveway grade situation if it were to face south.
If they already noticed that, it would be actually flatter.
The what?
It would be actually flatter, the, that part of Dover is actually higher than where they're tying onto the driveway. It's going to be a flatter driveway.
The east is flatter than the south?
The south is flatter than the east.
Oh, okay.
It's an elevation of 101.53 versus an elevation of 99.75, so almost a foot, almost two feet higher in relation to the finished floor than where they're connecting that. So that's going to be a flatter driveway.
Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
I don't have much else to add beyond that. Without seeing an alternative orientation of this house, it's difficult to say. I would actually defer to you, Chairman Ellis, as far as like calculating driveway slope just at like first blush of this plot plan. But she is correct, the applicant is correct. We do aim for a 12% driveway grade or less. We can administratively waive it up to 14% if there are special circumstances at the property, and that's not uncommon. And there's really no more add to that, that either way is possible.
What's the logic for not having it in the back?
I believe that code was written and kind of just forgot about corner lots. It's the same goal, you know, it's adjacent property lines, you know, they're both the same owner. I believe it may have just been something that, when it was written, just wasn't thought of because it is achieving the exact same goal. And the corner lines, just like, I don't know if you remember with the fencing we had a couple of years ago, these corner lots just keep getting dealt like unique situations and restraints that interior lots do not. So that was the rationale of bringing the code edit to you guys, as well as the request two months ago, three months ago now, probably.
I think this is, like we've told you all before, Gail and I can talk about this. When we became a city, we.
Yes.
We needed to get zoning code quickly. We needed to get zoning code quickly, and so we just started grabbing code from neighboring cities and putting it together as best we could in a very quick fashion to try to get ahead of proposed development, and this is probably one of those things that we didn't think about, all the corner lots in Bella Vista, because we were dealing...we took code from a city that had pretty rectilinear layout.
So, there's a logical reason.
I can't remember any, Gail, unless you can. I don't even know if we talked about this.
I don't even know if it was talked about either.
I think we just stole it from one of our neighbors to the south and adopted it and moved on.
Yeah.
But it's difficult, because we are very bound of what is the hardship, and our applicant didn't really give us a really great one. The only one that could be there maybe is the unique shape of the lot that the house was being proposed on, and turning it 90 degrees would create a much smaller backyard, an odd-shaped backyard, but that's about the only hardship that I can see, but I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth either.
But the grade of the driveway...
It would actually be flatter, that would be.
Exactly.
An incorrect statement, yes.
I mean, some of the driveways here are horrendous.
If the commission is done having a conversation, yes, we'll have a motion to approve.
One second, if we're going to talk about this later, why are we talking about this now?
This is a variance request. Until council takes action...
Okay.
And changes the code, then this...
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. No matter what we do tonight with that one, we still have to deal with this request, unless the applicant wants to withdraw it or table it indefinitely. So...
Will I make a motion? We approve zoning variance 50413.
We have a motion from Farner.
I'll second.
We got a second from Klessen. You call the roll, please.
Portillo?
Oh, I knew you'd do that to me.
Farner?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Klessen?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. Staff will get with you on the next step. We would encourage you in the future to make sure you don't have any variance requests before you get your lumber ordered. Thank you very much. Next up, we have a waiver request on access drive surface material requirements. This is in conjunction with the zoning variance we just reviewed. Staff, Mr. Jones?
Yep, he's exactly right. There's nothing new to add at this meeting compared to the work session. Just wanted to reiterate that SB2 gravel is approved for surfacing for parking, but in our code, when it speaks to SB2, it's listed for certain vehicles, and it's very explicit about what those vehicles are. It lists them out as recreational vehicles, enclosed trailers, golf carts, boats, non-enclosed flatbed trailers, truck campers, et cetera. And nowhere in that list is like an everyday passenger vehicle listed, so historically, staff has always seen SB2 gravel as parking and driveway extensions. In section 107, 314, it requires surfacing material types of asphalt, concrete, brick, or permeable pavers, which would lead to this accessory structure, and that's also another historical interpretation, that access drives that lead to a structure need to adhere to the surface material types listed in 107, 314. SB2 gravel does not apply, because that's not parking, it's an actual access drive. Same plot plan applies here, though, on page 34 showing the shop area with the gravel driveway that's proposed. Nothing else has changed. Staff has no other comments, but is happy to take questions.
Any questions for staff?
So, is this gravel drive all the way to Dover Drive? Would it be gravel all the way to the edge of pavement?
Yes, according to the plot plan on file, it would lead up to Dover Drive, and I believe Dover Drive is currently unpaved, and there are no tentative plans for Dover Drive to be paved, but in the event that it is paved, gravel is...it's a bit carnivorous to the edge of street, since we are an asphallic shoulder city, we don't have the infrastructure to prevent chipping and erosion when gravel abuts the street.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a point of correction, just to offer for the record, just a little clarification note. So, our code, our development code, chapter 107 for access management, has surface material requirements, which is what they're seeking a waiver for tonight. Of course, as he mentioned, you know, concrete pavers, asphalt, things of that nature. And then, our zoning code has a required parking space surface material requirement, which is the exact same thing, however, this does not apply here, because they're already meeting their two spaces on the primary. And then, the other section of code that he is mentioning that allows SB2 is not in the development code, it is up in the health and safety and nuisances sections of code that's, you know, out of our purview, and that's for additional parking, so it does not apply for the required parking or city access to right-of-way. So, just wanted to clarify the kind of areas that he was talking about. The SB2 does not apply here, that's why they're seeking a variance.
Waiver.
Correct.
Any other questions for staff?
So, they want just gravel...
Correct.
At the accessory...
Correct.
Building.
Correct.
Instead of a driveway.
Correct. Is the applicant present? If you have anything you'd like to add to the staff report?
Yeah. The only thing to add to this one is, as Ruben did say, this road is not paved, this is in an area of Bella Vista that's currently not developed at all. Carol Electric has not even run back there, and we're probably between a third of a mile and a half a mile down this road. It'll be the first house that's back there, so since if this was a new construction on a paved road, would not even be asking for this, but because it is that far back there by itself on a dirt road, and in all of our years of building in Bella Vista, I'd be dumbfounded if this got paved in the next 15 to 20 years unless all of a sudden, you know, 20 houses get built back there. So, because it is back there by itself on a dirt road with no indication of being paved anytime in the near future, that's the only reason we have to do a gravel driveway to the accessory building.
But if it does get paved, then what does the city do to make sure that this driveway gets paved, so what we do spend our money on doesn't get damaged quickly?
If you...I mean, I don't know if it's, you know, can be done if it's put in there that it has to be, you know, concrete at that time.
It can't be, unfortunately. All right, thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicant or staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve waiver 2023-50414. Make a motion to approve. We got a motion from Sedbury?
Second.
Got a second from Dool. If you call the roll, please.
Farner?
No.
Sedbury?
No.
Klessen?
No.
Dool?
No.
Portillo?
No.
Lloyd?
No.
Ellis?
No. Your waiver's denied. Thank you. Next up, we have a zoning variance request on the C4. Let me start all over. We're going to take care of the zoning variance first, and then we'll head on to the waivers in large scale. Is that all right, or do you want to cover all of them at the same time?
Well, it's workman's, but...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
All of them are considered underneath the staff report, however, the zoning variance can go first.
All right, yes, go ahead and take care of a zoning variance request on the C4 front setback associated with the large scale. If you would go ahead and make it and give us your staff report, please.
Sure, so, under the staff report located on page 35 of your agenda packet, contains an analysis of items E through H, which include two waivers, one zoning variance, and a large-scale development. The zoning variance is for the 75-foot front setback of a C4 district lot. This lot was plotted in 2017 via a lot split that was approved by the planning commission, and the applicant has provided a letter farther down in your packet to describe why they cannot meet that 75-foot setback. They're currently proposing the 3,200-square-foot building at 61 feet from the property line. In addition to that zoning variance, they have multiple retaining wall placement and setback waivers, and then they are asking for a waiver of pedestrian accommodations along 71 Business or Bella Vista Way. And finally, they're requesting a waiver of the drainage criteria manual requirement for onsite detention due to an increase in post-construction runoff. Since the...since the work session, there has been one update in particular. The applicant has decided to forego the temporary construction access drive that they had proposed on Bella Vista Way. They will utilize the existing access easement that runs between the Combs Dental Office and Oldham Drive. Engineering has one comment remaining, planning staff have no comments other than standard comments. Engineering is going to require a new geotech report, and this condition shall be met prior to the building permit application. At this time, staff is recommending approval conditioned upon the applicant meeting the engineering staff comments. Happy to take any questions.
All right, are there any questions for staff at this time? All right, seeing none of the applicant present, and would like to address the commission concerning the variance request on the front setback in a C4. You go ahead and state your name and address, sir.
Hello, Commissioner. I'm Avery Bodine, I'm speaking as civil engineer, 9206 South Strata. Seems that we have a building setback in front that is 75-foot, and we're asking for a 60-foot, and this is to get for that particular variance, instead of having to ask for additional variances for the side setback and rear setback, we only have to ask for this one in order to meet the criteria.
Okay.
So, we were just discussing this variance right now, correct?
Correct, that is the only thing that we're discussing at this time. Are there any questions for the applicant concerning the variance request to reduce the front setback from 75 to 60 feet? All right, if you go ahead and take a seat, we'll conduct our public hearing. All right, if there's anybody in the public that would like to address the commission concerning this variance request on reducing the front setback from 75 feet to 60 feet. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, any comments, questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve variance 2023-50376. We got a motion from Farner. I'm sorry.
Second.
Second from Lloyd. If you would call the roll, please.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Farner?
Yes.
Klessen?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. All right, next up, we have three or two waiver requests? Am I reading that well? Yeah, we have two waiver requests. We have a waiver request on the retaining wall setback, and then we have a waiver request on onsite detention requirements, pedestrian accommodations, retaining wall setbacks and placements, and cut setbacks. If you could go into a little bit more detail on exactly what these are, because I do have a couple of questions.
Sure, so, the waiver requests actually cover two properties, one of which is going to be the Combs Dental Office to the south located at 2690 Bella Vista Way. That retaining wall setback request is for a retaining wall that begins on the subject site and crosses the property line, thus it can't meet a setback from the property line if it's extending between them, and that is to bring the driveway up to the grade that is required by the fire code. And so, that request is going to be under 50377. Under waiver 50374, that's going to be the rest of the waivers on the subject site itself. So, pedestrian accommodations, all commercial developments require that they place a ribbon of sidewalk, however, the applicant is requesting not to place it due to a lack of existence along Bella Vista Way. The applicant's also requesting to cut the property. If you've been there, you understand the site has challenging topography, and the code requires that cut setback to be a distance away from the property line, and they're proposing it to be six inches away from the property line to the south, and that's going to be on the western side. They're also asking for a waiver from retaining wall placement, and this is for a retaining wall proposed within a private access easement. Our code allows them to be placed within a utility easement, if the utility sign off on it, however, when it comes to private access easements, the code prohibits it. So, this access easement was plotted with the lot split in 2017, and that's the access easement that gets them from the subject site to Oldham. It's one contiguous easement.
Any questions for staff on these two waiver requests? All right, is the applicant present, and would you like...you have anything you'd like to add to the staff report?
Hello, I'm Avery Bodine, I'm speaking as civil engineer. We don't have anything additional to add, except for retaining walls going across the property. We've talked to Carol Electric, and they did not have any issue with that, have that be emailed. We're talking about the public walkway, is that correct?
Could you talk a little bit about that?
I'm sorry, so, we're talking about the 15-foot grade from the property line, correct?
Yeah, you've got the...we have the retaining wall setback on the doctor's office to the south of your project, and then we've got the...then on your site itself, the retaining wall setback again, your cut slope setbacks, your pedestrian accommodations, and your onsite detention requirements.
Okay, so, let's start from the top then. So, the 15-foot...
Okay, go ahead.
Where we're at, or six inch basically on the rock wall, is more, preferably more safer than the retaining wall option at that particular location, the northwest section. Public walkway, it's a very steep site, it's very hard to get to, there's no additional sidewalk to Bella Vista Way either, along the highway. The detention problem that we're running to, or needing a waiver for that, is due to, we've already got the runoff that's coming off the site right now, it doesn't even have time to infiltrate the soils, and the engineer of record, he has went through and talked to the powers that be about the downstream storage, stormwater infrastructure, and has a drainage report proving that that has met the retaining wall, like I told you about, the retaining wall is the utility easement that Carol Electric's good with, and I believe that is all I have to add.
Okay. I do have one question for you all. We have approved the waiver on onsite detention requirements before. We did that for the Casey's over at Reardon Road, that was contingent upon providing some kind of a mechanical water quality treatment system be installed in lieu of doing the onsite detention. Is that something that you would be open to? Because I will tell you, as a civil engineer, I'm inclined to vote no on this one unless you will agree to do something as way of a mechanical onsite treatment system.
If code was met for the...
I don't know how code would be met without some kind of a detention pod.
Understood, yes, sir. So, we will consider some mechanical...
Okay.
Storm system.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and tie up item F, a waiver request on retaining wall setback associated with parcel number 1640791. I believe that is the doctor's office to the south. If we could get a motion, please, to approve. We got a motion from Dool?
Say.
We got a second from Farner. Call the roll, please.
Klessen?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Farner?
Yes.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. All right, next up, we have waiver 2023-50375. I do need probably a motion to add the requirement of providing some kind of onsite pre-treatment process be added as a condition of approval before we vote on the actual waiver itself.
Do you need a motion for that?
I need...I'd like a motion for that.
I'd make that motion.
Got a motion from Sedbury?
Second.
Got a second from Portillo. We call the roll, please.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Klessen? Klessen?
Yes.
Farner?
Yes.
Doole?
Yes.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. All right, if I get a motion to approve waiver 2023-50375.
So moved.
Got a motion from Sedbury?
Second.
Second from Portillo, if you call the roll, please.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Farner?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Doole?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Klessen?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. All right, next up, we have large-scale 2023-50374. Do we have anything we need to add on the large scale? Ms. Robertson?
Subject to the engineers' comments and subject to the ability to meet the waiver requirements of an onsite treatment.
Okay. We have, we have a motion to approve large-scale 2023-50374.
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion from Klessen?
Second.
Second from Farner, if you call the roll, please.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Farner?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Doole?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Klessen?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. All right, large scale is approved, subject to staff comments. Thank you. Next up, we have waiver 2023-50392, a waiver request to use high-density polypropylene HDPP pipe instead of the originally approved reinforced concrete pipe for underground piping for the detention ponds on final plat 50394. Ms. Robertson?
Okay, few things to add from the work session that we last discussed this. You will see that it properly shows HDPP, not HDPE this time, so the waiver request that you will consider before the final plat is basically a waiver of article seven or 10, 12? Gosh, you know what, those numbers are hard. The drainage manual, XIV stating that RCP must be used for drainage pipes under city streets. Our HDPP was used in place of that. And then, once the final plat is up for consideration, staff will note that my recommendation has changed since publishing this on Friday. As of this morning, the applicant was able to meet the remaining comments of the water department. So my recommendation now is that this meets all requirements, staff comments. So I am recommending approval so long as you guys approve the waiver 50392 of that drainage manual requirement of RCP. Staff will note too, and kind of wanted to brief you and discuss with you as well tonight, this will dedicate 38 new lots as well as two sections of common property. And right now, that whole chunk of land is zoned R1, and staff think it would be best practice if we return later and rezone this as a planning commission to common property. Kind of wanted to get your thoughts or blessings on that. That way, that common property can be restricted to not single-family houses, since it will be dedicated as common property per this plat. This plat will also create or dedicate three new public right of ways or three new residential streets. Byland will connect to 279 now, and then we have two streets that will be new. So the master street plan will also be updated once this goes to city council for approval, because this must be approved and accepted by the city council and ultimately the mayor's signature, since this is a final plat. Those are the only items I have that are new, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for staff? Does the applicant have anything they'd like to add to the staff report? If you would give us your name and address for the record, sir, who you represent?
My name is Gene Roseclose, I represent Cooper Communities, 903 North 47th, next order here, in Rogers. I don't have anything to add, but we are available for questions if you have any concerns or questions about the HDPP substitution, inadvertent substitution for the reinforced concrete pipe, I'll be happy to address those.
Any questions for the applicant?
All right. Thank you.
See, any, any other additional comments or questions from the commission? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve waiver 2023-50392.
So moved.
Got a motion from Farner?
Second.
Second from Doole, if you call the roll, please.
Klessen?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Doole?
Yes.
Farner?
Yes.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. All right, do we have any further questions or comments on the final plat for Trail Ridge, located near Byland Lane and Forest Hill Boulevard? See, none, if I could get a motion to send this on to the city council recommending acceptance of the final plat, correct? Because we don't actually accept a council, does it? We are recommending the city council to accept this final plat.
So moved.
Got a motion from Lloyd?
Second.
Second from Portillo, if you call the roll, please.
Klessen?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Doole?
Yes.
Farner?
Yes.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. All right, next up, we have lot split 2023-50396, a correction plat for 14646 Hiawassee Road. I don't remember this one from the work session.
Typically, incidentals don't go to work session.
Okay, fair enough. Go ahead, Ms. Robertson.
We have a unique incidental subdivision on the agenda tonight. It's known as 14646 Hiawassee Road. This piece of property has been through quite the history. It's went through a couple changes of hands and surveyors, and, long story short, a plat needs to be approved by you all, right of way needs to be accepted by you all, property lines need adjusted, so that way we can move forward with the building process. So this plat will correct some property lines based off the historic legal description, so that will be the portion of the correction plat. And it also, in a sense, is a property line adjustment, because it will be adjusting the CCI Brigadoon Reserved Property to the east, their platted subdivision, which have been quick claim, quick claim deeded over to the applicant so that they can perform this correction plat, so that way the property lines properly match and represent the legal description. You'll see that the quick claim, it's included, the L 2023 19302. All items and property owners have provided the correct permission here. Staff is recommending approval of this correction plat. Staff will note, though, this is dedicating right of way on Hiawassee Road, it's also dedicating public easements. I did provide a staff-made, very, very basic exhibit on page 143 of kind of what's happening here. The red highlighted area is a general representation of what Benton County currently represents this piece of property, and this green highlighted area basically will be the true or more correct based off the legal description. So you'll see some of that awkwardly shaped reserved property to the east, I've hatched it in blue, will be now included, so that's the property line adjustment, and then the correction plat itself will be reflected from red to green. Again, very basic representation for discussion only, I am not a surveyor, but I'm also a visual learner, so I wanted to provide that. I also provided the Brigadoon subdivision that shows the previous property lines that we will be adjusting with this correction plat. And then the plat itself is 145 and 146, showing the true representation of the property lines via legal description. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for staff? Is the applicant present? Would you like to add anything to the staff report? Just give us your name and address and who you represent, please.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Michael, I'm with Owen Incorporated, formerly Anderson Engineering. So we're providing surveying services for this project for Mr. Horstman, the property owner.
Okay. Anything else to add to the staff report?
No, I think that pretty much covers it. It was an interesting one, just the difference between the GIS tax parcels and the property boundary per their deed, there was quite a bit of difference there, as well as what was previously platted for that east adjoining subdivision, Brigadoon subdivision, so.
Any questions for the applicant? Commissioners, thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Now we'll entertain a motion to approve lot split 2023-50396.
So moved.
Got a motion from Portillo?
Second.
Got a second from Farner, call the roll, please.
Klessen?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Doole?
Yes.
Farner?
Yes.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. All right, thank you. Next up, we have ordinance amendment, a proposed amendment to section 10968 to allow residential rear setbacks to be considered with the notice of structural encroachment mechanism. Ms. Robertson?
Nothing new to add from the work session. Staff did want to note that this is essentially just a code cleanup and what we believe the original intent was of 10968H corner lots. Interpretation may have just been missed on this one, and staff believes the intent was to include them. And so we, at your request, are adding those two little words and rear, so we can get that cleaned up and get them... We actually do have quite a few of these that are currently pending in our review house right now. I feel like the corner lots kind of popped up out of nowhere, and everyone's developing on them right now, so we do have a few that are waiting on tonight's determination, as well as city council's ultimate determination, so happy to take any questions.
Any questions for staff concerning this ordinance amendment? All right, this isn't ordinance amendment, so we do have to conduct a public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to address the commission concerning this request? See, now we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, any additional questions or comments?
I make a motion that we send this on to the city council recommending approval.
We got a motion from Farner to recommend this to city council for approval.
Second.
We got a second from Lloyd, if you call the roll, please.
Doole?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Klessen?
Yes.
Farner?
Yes.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. Next up, we have an ordinance amendment, a proposed amendment to article seven of our landscaping, screening, and buffering to provide a planting requirement for single-family and duplex residential developments. Ms. Robertson?
I did update my staff memo or exhibit for this regular meeting at the request of Councilman Honchel to include all of the Arbor Day supporting documents that we basically used and reviewed to prepare a change, since we are a Tree City USA for the last five years. I've included the last three years of Arkansas-specific data, as well as the recommendations for Tree City ordinances, which, you know, we do have a fairly strong, already adopted tree ordinance currently. It just so happens to exempt single-family residential from all of it. And so a minor amendment to our existing code to make single-family at least have to place two shade trees, sewer, and septic lots for this consideration before the C of O can be issued. And then, of course, we are referencing the pretty hefty tree ordinance for other requirements, such as recommended species, placement, such as, you know, can't be placed or interfere with utility easement, and other items of that nature. So we're referencing the already written code that already exists, however, all we're doing is saying, single-family homes need to place two shade trees in the front yard or whatever yard abuts the right of way. And if they're a corner lot, one, one per side, so that way they don't have to put two per side. Other than that, staff doesn't have much to add for this one specifically. I will say that our comp plan, I did want to point out, that's included in here for you guys, our comp plan does call a need for an ordinance like this. However, it would prefer that we have a shade tree in the front yard and a street tree. However, in Bella Vista, we are very unique, shade trees are a very interesting task here, because the right of way varies greatly here in our residential districts. The roads were not placed in the center. So declaring or, you know, placing a tree for a street tree would be hard, when we all know where the front yard is based with all these developments. So staff took basically an easier approach for that, but still meeting the intent, two shade trees, so still meeting that comprehensive plan goal for our residential neighborhoods. Staff notes, also, you know, other ordinances were compared whenever we were drafting this. Bentonville has a similar item, we also compared with other cities. However, again, we are unique in the fact that we are already platted before our zoning code was written, so a lot of this does not apply to a lot of the development here, because most of our city was platted. So other cities get to review these kind of things, and like subdivision developments, plats of that nature, whereas we don't, because again, we're a pre-platted city. Happy to take any questions for the two shade tree requirement. And then Councilman Honchel is also here, and the mayor also wanted me to share with you guys tonight, he wished he could be here, however, he is not able to due to health issues, so he just wanted to share that he supports it, and he believes that the city residents support it as well.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions? We'll open the floor to the public and give Mr. Honchel his due process as any other citizen of Bella Vista. Any questions for staff over this ordinance?
Are we taking a guarantee for these trees?
That was not included in this one, in this proposal.
Okay, so that was my question, because plant trees, depending on what time of year, most likely they're going to die, or at least one of them is. You know, I've seen developments that have put in dozens of trees and they are all gone in two years. So if we're going to do this, we need some guarantee that X amount of time that that tree is guaranteed for a replacement tree is installed.
Okay. If you guys want us to make that edit, we can get that going. We already have that in code, we just didn't include it for the R1, so we can make that applicable to this if you guys want to.
Because I'll be honest, if you make me plant a tree in the front yard and I can take it out and not deal with the leaves, I'm going to take it out. So we do need some type of guarantee, I think. I hate leaves.
In the summertime, you like them.
I don't even like them in the summertime.
You will live on that tree.
Not leaving.
So how do we deal with septic systems? And I've just never noted here, because you have a lot like mine, might, we should be able to design a tighter front yard. I can't plant anything in front of them. So how do we deal with lots like that?
So those are aware, where they're placed in the front, typically, the majority of them are placed in the back. There was not an administrative variance posted for this one, like there is in the next one that we'll talk about, but if that's something that you want us to look at, we can also do that.
I think we need to add that, because as a...
Or exempt them from it?
However you want to do it, but if the, if the septic system is permitted in the front yard, they need to be exempted, so that we're not doing variances.
Just mow them and mulch them and let them go back to nature.
That'd be great, because my yard's rocks.
See, that's your own problem.
You needed that thing grassed.
I know. Any other questions for staff? If not, we'll go ahead and conduct our public hearing. If there's anybody in the public who would like to address the commission concerning this ordinance amendment?
I don't really have anything to add.
If you would give us, if you're going to, yes, you have to give us your name and address, sir.
Mr. Honchel, one Scott's Circle, Bella Vista. Taylor has done the lion's share every bit of this, so it's like 0.1% of input, she has done a great job. You know, the two-tree requirement, I think, is kind of a minimalist approach to at least getting something in place, get a development pattern, start a development, so that I think we can look back on decades from now and be really proud that we put these trees in the streets and kept, you know, beautiful view chugging forward. You know, all this stuff started with Gordon Hollow with me, and that's when I was sitting up here with you folks last year, these were the concerns that I had, and we're seeing it. Nothing against the developer, they're following codes under a place, and like I said, I just think this, this is a very minor, you know, of the city for, for the residents, you know, a property. This is, this is a contribution, it's not a requirement, that's how I look at it. But anyway, I do applaud Taylor for her part. And please, the waiver accepted, that's, we made sure to keep the septic wholly set, so I mean, the trees are one thing, the septic's a whole different deal, and that's, and like, if you guys would like to craft some kind of amendment and waiver or something like that, you know, I think that's a, that would be a great thing to add.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public that would like to address the commission concerning this one? All right, see, now we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, any other questions or comments?
The viability guarantees, there are also size requirements?
Size requirement for the trees?
Yeah, for the initial planting.
So that is included in our code, and it references it, I think the shade trees, can't remember off the top of my head, but I did mention it, it references the code, it's either two and a, two and a half? Is it two and a half? Okay.
Two and a half inches, two and a half inch caliper at rest time. Yes, ma'am?
I'd just like to point out that the tree board is wholly behind this ordinance.
I would like one clarification. Now, if you can save trees and you have trees, then you don't have to plant the two trees. As long as you have two trees in the front yard existing.
Incorrect. So this would require all new R1 developments to plant two shade trees.
Regardless of how many trees were saved when they cleared the lot?
Yes. Because that next section of code only applies to sewer lots, which we haven't got to that one yet, but yeah, this one is just a typical shade tree planting two per house.
Well, that's a fair question. Like, in my house, I kept my front yard fully wooded with large natural oak trees. And if I were to go plant two new ones, they're going to die almost immediately because they're legally shaded by, I mean, and I guess that's a fair question, is if I've already got two shade trees that I grew up in my front yard, do I need to plant two more if there's no room for them? Because a nice oak tree will spread out 40 feet in diameter.
We could add a clause in there. That wasn't included, I believe, because currently that's not happening, like no trees are being saved.
Fair enough, but, I mean, you know, there's always that incentive, like, say, hey, if you preserve...
Yeah, we do have a tree preservation in our current code. So we could do something like that if they preserve a tree over a certain, you know, if it's substantial enough, then we could replace that with the preservation.
I can just see people coming in here, they've got trees in their front yard, and they want to waiver because they don't want to plant two trees, so.
Well, yeah, and you would prefer...
A shade tree.
And you would prefer, you know, the established tree to be saved rather than planting.
Yes.
For sure. But yeah, we can add that in there as well. This was all the comments I was looking for at the work session. You guys were so polite at the work session.
Well, only a casual...
I wasn't here, that's...
No, I don't think so. I think we've got it covered.
Well, when I read this ordinance, unless it's a change, and I wasn't here for the work session, I apologize, it says existing trees may be preserved or credit towards number required trees.
The existing ordinance? So yeah, that...
It says under...
Three, that's why.
Under R1... 109214.
Did I throw it in there?
There is a, there is a free reduction credit.
Did I jump ahead of myself? I did. Look at that, it's already in there, already been addressed.
Fair enough. What it was about, if your septic system's in the front yard, then you are exempted from this requirement.
And a guarantee for approval process.
Yeah, I don't know what kind of a standard it is.
Three years.
Three years. Some cities it's one, and most cities, all cities are three.
Our current code's one year.
I don't think that's long enough.
How would you monitor that? Because you can monitor it in the beginning by holding back the certificate of occupancy. You mean codes, or somebody's got to keep track of when these trees were planted and go back to see if they're still there?
With most of our codes, they're reactionary versus proactive.
That's, that's one of, yeah.
So we can set them out, you know, before we end that period, say, oh, they're dead, so we take the bomb by trees. Now, for private lots, right-of-way, they have one, guarantee tree, you know.
Most cities don't require, like, this, require, kind of, you know, hey, I want to take care of my tree for a year, but what's your...
We require a bomb.
I guess, but...
We currently require a bomb, and it's for all ride-apply. We don't have any street tree or right-of-way requirements right now, but we do that with non-single-family development for one year. Is that something they want to copy for the R1? Or just a maintenance, something, or guarantee?
Twenty-five thousand lots.
Twenty-six thousand lots left to be developed, potentially.
I don't know how to understand, I don't pay for those ordinance. I don't know how they address maintenance. They don't, they don't at all.
They hold it to the developer subdivision, which they go back after one year to the evaluation of trees that die, they make the developer replant on the street trees.
That's different.
Yeah, they, that's part of individual home, they don't go back. Once it becomes individual homeowner, they don't, you have to let the tree that was supposed to be preserved, they technically can't do anything about it.
Okay.
Maybe we'll forego that again. We don't want to have Taylor brought chicken trees for the...
Yeah.
If they ran the right-of-way or if there's a street tree, I can see more.
We don't have what we've got.
So just the exemption for septic placement?
Yeah. Yes. We'll keep it simple for staff. In fact, I get a motion to recommend this on the city council for approval. Got a motion from Portillo? A second from Sedberry? If you call the roll, please.
Portillo?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Plessin?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Farner?
Yes.
Sedberry?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. All right, next up, we have a proposed amendment to Article 13 of the Grading and Erosion Control and Stormwater Pollution Prevention Ordinance. Ms. Robertson, please.
So this is the other portion of my staff memo, page 156. This is really where the data focuses on heavily that I brought in from our permitting system. Just to give you an idea, currently how much we are permitting or, you know, restriction right now, so how much is able to be cleared in Bellevista. Just to kind of briefly go over, you know, there's around 40,000 parcels in Bellevista, 24, almost 25,000 are still vacant. And to give you some numbers in here to kind of consider, so GECs are Grading and Erosion Control Permits at our CBS office is known or are known as our clearing permit. So that's the permit you get to alter land and clear trees, so that covers your SWIP or your Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, and your grading slash land alterations if you're cuts, your fill, things like that. So that's what the builder gets from us whenever they want to clear a lot for a residential building permit. So, and just to pull on to 2023, you know, we're, well, this was also for the work session. To July, into July, we've already issued 239, and our standard lot size is a third of acres. That means, you know, the preservation requirements that we have, that's up to 76 acres of natural vegetation and tree canopy that may have been permitted to be cleared from January 1st to July 31st. In 2022, we issued around 698, which again provides a possibility of over 200 acres or 223 acres being cleared last year alone, bringing up the total possibility of cleared acres in city limits of Bellevista from to 229 or 299 in 2022 and 2023. And then finally, I think, at that point, standpoint to consider since 2013, we have issued 3,600 or 3,634 GEC applications, bringing a potential for cleared area acres. We have no preservation requirements as of now of Bellevista's trees over the last eight acres, approximately 1,162 acres. That's over the size of Central Park, New York City, which that's 843 acres, just to give you a general idea. And so with nearly 60% of our plotted lots left to be developed, staff has noted, as well as support of the tree board and councilman, that it's a support next year rather than later, so that those other 24,000 lots hopefully can start making a step towards can be preservation. Because again, as we talked about in the last ordinance, you know, you would rather prefer a mature tree to be saved than to place two baby trees that could die in six months. So that's where we really want to focus the preservation points. However, we all are aware that Bellevista is unique because we don't have sewer or mature trees. So this section of code only is speaking to sewer lots. If you'll note, we did provide a land alteration addition to the section of code. And our land alteration, so it's right after the driveway, around 12%. We added a table or are proposing a table where single-family duplex residential development should save 25% of the natural canopy preservation. Staff didn't know there is administrative variance starting here for unique situations that we kind of talked about at the work session, so we would be able to vary those by 5%. So, there's a unique circumstance that says they can't get this R1 lot developed for any reason, they need to clear this 5%, we can do that administratively without granting to you. And the staff doesn't want to know the affordability part, the top part, you know, now, it should not be required to plant trees in order to reach this percentage. So if they have a 25% preservation requirement, then the lots are already cleared. Like, there are a few on the west side that are already just buried. They would not be required to meet this 25% if they were sewered. Their septic already doesn't apply. But those are the main things, I just want to reiterate, this does not apply to septic system lots because of the unique constraint that septic provides or poses in Bellevista because these little R1 lots that we develop are normally being developed from step-back to step-back to fit a house and a weed field, and staff is aware of that, as well as other important players that I've noted. So this is only sewer lots. And something I wanted to note too, just to keep, you know, on the forefront of the conversation, we have a whole lot of air requirements in our zoning code. If you're worried about, you know, house size requirements, only 35% of our R1 lot can be covered with this structure. So this 25% preservation won't even get near to touch or affect that. So they can still build their lot out to 35% if they want to, just 25% of the natural vegetation, you know, we would prefer that to be untapped or tree can't be preserved anyway. Call it out for you guys, happy to take any questions.
Any questions for staff concerning this?
This ordinance is only for, in terms of sewer lots, or it doesn't concern sewer lots. Only for sewer, only for sewer.
Any other questions for staff? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and conduct the public hearing. The public will watch and address the commission concerning this ordinance. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and conduct the public hearing. Commissioners, any additional questions or comments? Seeing that, I get a motion to recommend this on the city council for approval. Got a motion from Lloyd, thank you. Second from Farner, hold the roll, please.
Plessin?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Farner?
Yes.
Sedberry?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
All right, next up, we have an ordinance amendment, proposed amendment 107F249 of subdivision development code for design standards, provide underground underground utilities requirement. Ms. Robertson.
This is a simple clarification slash edit. It's going from a suggestion to a shall requirement in our subdivision design standards. We did have a request of Councilman Honchel for this one. This kind of ties into the tree preservation discussion. It kind of ties the tail code of that, is, you know, utilities. And so our current code for residential subdivisions, they don't have to put underground utilities, it just says, you know, if you could, if you could. And staff is proposing to change that from a should to a shall. So after this amendment, staff proposes to read, in new residential, commercial, and industrial developments requiring planning commissions approval, all utility lines and state developments shall be placed underground. And of course, it says temporary, utilities are excluded from that. But that's the simplicity of this, we're taking it from a recommendation, a codified recommendation, and turning it into a shall or requirement codification to place utilities underground.
This is primarily applied to electric and that.
I could not hear you over the ceiling, I'm sorry.
Anybody who wants to turn it back, it's due to our contractor for the warranty group. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, I regret. Anyway, this is primarily applied to overhead electric and that and communication.
Correct, that's really the standard that's still put in the order.
Yeah. Any other questions for staff?
This is still a little bit overhead.
It's for like your electric lines, your AC/TV costs, all of that.
Oh, that's true.
This would require that everybody to...
That's why I thought she said, except that's what I mean.
Yes, right now, I think with those...
Yeah, I understand, but it's getting all of them correct.
Yes.
Yes, typically, yeah, just to clarify, typically in our large-scale developments, developments that, you know, the electric lines are really the only lines that are still overhead or shown as overhead. Everything else is, you know, moved underground, but this would just straight up require all of it to be required, which requires approval to be placed underground instead of overhead. Could I ask who is responsible for making sure that happens at the electric company or is it the developer?
It would be a part of the planning to come forth to, it would have a show that the...
So clearly, we review those through our large scales and subdivision developments, and you'll see that they say on the overhead, but this would be approved, they would say underground instead of, yeah, that's typically handled by us and things like that.
It would require existing, you know, existing, existing trees to take a whole town to start here, because that's not a bad, totally, you know, part of the...
I can't, 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 I can't,
You can fix your maintenance, you can handle your road tree, so yours is given a label for me, so, you know, just I appreciate it. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for staff? I got a question, Jason, you're probably going to have to answer this. Can we require the electric meter to be attached to the house instead of being a three state unit for a yard? Because our core electric block decided that they don't want a little electric meter to be attached. I would love to see that attached to the door. I would be much more attached to the structure.
But you shouldn't have to apply existing residential.
Have any, do you have any connected electric meter shall be attached to the house?
Well, that would have to be answered. It could be, you know.
Yep. Fantastic.
What do you really think?
It's starting to be common for them to do that.
I know that, and it's very infuriating.
It is.
Looks terrible.
Yeah.
I know we're not the only council or planning commission discussing this right now.
What is the rationale for doing that? Is it because of the shorter run of that pole rather than all way to the house?
Well, because they don't have to maintain their public line across private property anymore.
But they still need the owner, I can't dispute my own house, but I have underground, but it starts at the pole and then they ran down underground to my house.
Yes.
So there's nothing for them to, I mean, it's an additional length of wire, which I'm sure I paid for when I bought the house, but.
You did. That's the way I.
And it reduces building space.
Well, you have, if a car were to come off the road, they're going to wipe out the electric meter and.
Right. Of course.
Because now it's not on the house, it's out at the edge of the road, literally.
I just wondered, had something to do with their, the technology they used to read the meters, they're all networked together and all that stuff.
They said read my meter just fine, send a mail every month.
Yeah. Cause one of the things that's all.
I've always understood it, might be incorrect, it's like their, your private equipment didn't start until after the meter.
That's correct. And they have a little bit more line they have to.
I understood it to, the way that, why they started moving those is because the utility company didn't want to be responsible after electricity went onto your property anymore. And I could be wrong.
I don't think they were the responsible for digging, so the second you put that pedestal, then they're not responsible for the digging to the house. And selfishly for them, it's less trips for them to have to go during the new construction because they set the pedestal once, they wipe their hands of it, they're done.
But I said it's a great house or a little more approximately. I've seen some very nice homes built by my house, they got that stupid thing sitting.
Me too.
Yeah, it's atrocious.
You don't convince me, I'll be happy to grant it.
I really appreciate that. Look forward to seeing that one. All right, with that, do we have a motion for, to recommend this on the city council for approval?
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion from Setberry?
Second.
Got a second from Farner. If you call roll please.
Setberry?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Duel?
Yes.
Farner?
Yes.
Question?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. All right, that ends all of our new business and takes us back into open discussion. I know it's been a long night, but we do need to talk about, I do apologize, we do need to talk about our conversation we had with the health department the other day, and it was brought up tonight. We have had instances where builders are, quite frankly, treating their septic permits as a suggestion versus something that they have to do and they're starting to come back to us. Quite frequently asking for forgiveness instead of permission. And there were several recommendations that kind of were talked about in our roundtable with the health department via Zoom, things such as requiring home builders to actually make sure that their plans are coordinated and that they follow them once they're permitted versus, I guess we've been, we've had homes flipped and rotated and completely redesigned and the health department has never been aware of that, which has led to septic system failing. We had a recommendation from a septic system designer and installer that some way that we require a home builder to put up fencing to, you know, like orange construction fencing or flagging or something to protect the leach field before they start ground disturbing activities so that subcontractors know where they can and cannot go. I asked the question, the staff would require the actual floor plan be installed on the, on the plot plan that is used to permit the septic system versus just an outline and make sure that everything is shown like decks and patios and things like that, because a lot of times decks have been added in over top of septic fields or swimming pools after the fact, which is creating the need for people to come back and do weird things with their septic system because they're not taking care of them. I think all of that is said to ask staff to kind of start working on crafting some new language that just kind of, or policies that deal with how to approach and manage that a little bit better so that we don't have this constant, I don't know what you would call it.
Medical.
Well, I mean, we have some good home builders and we have some bad home builders in Bella Vista, it's just the nature of what Bella Vista is because we're so large and our code enforcement isn't going to get out and drive around to every lot and they've got, how many permits did we do last year, Taylor?
I think around six fifty residential permits. We do more GECs though, but residential around six fifty I believe. Six twenty.
So it's a lot for a very small, small staff to keep up with and make sure that there's not any oversights. I would, I'd be, I've thought about this over the weekend and last week, and I would not be opposed if we require them to, you know, almost do posting on their job site with a laminated sheet that says, here's my floor plan, here's my plot plan, this is what was permitted, to where when, when one of our inspectors goes by, they can look at it and say, yep, that's still the same thing as it was, it hasn't changed.
What is the, I'm just going to ask you, what does the health department itself do to see that any of their requirements are met?
They.
I mean, they're issuing a permit that people are not complying with, so it seems like they should be taking some action.
Well, they rely on the city to enforce it, that's what they said.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, they, I mean, they're, they're trying to manage with two people, the entire county, so, and, and when somebody like what we had tonight, you know, where they built the house in the wrong spot, they're like, okay, we'll approve this, but now they got to come get a variance from Bella Vista and.
Well, I feel these things continue to happen, to continue to happen as long as they end up getting grace in the back end. One of these times if they're telling no and it sticks and they get stuck with $200,000 they can't use, it might be softer.
It, I don't disagree.
And it's kind of like, you know, you can't count on them just giving you the blessing because you, you know, you're going to get stuck, you better make sure.
Yeah, well, I do think that, that's why I was saying, I'm not saying this to any change ordinance, but maybe just policy things to make it very clear, but there's another part of it, I know we just, earlier we said, let's relook at our policy, we would like for you to go back and modify the ordinance and say, basically make it illegal to grant a variance on a leach field. You know, don't even come ask because you can't, you know, there are some things you cannot ask for variance on. Me, I don't think you still ask for variance on a leach field, I think a leach field is absolute, you should not really get variance on it.
And if you, if you are building houses or two, they can be, and they are choosing to do that.
Right.
That's not, they can build a much smaller house and put that leach field on the lot.
Yeah.
On the lot.
But right now, the way our code is written, they come ask staff and I guess for variance on that, they have to say yes because it's, it's not.
They can seek it, but you know, it's, whether they meet the criteria, that's going to be ultimately up to y'all. They have to prove it, they have, but has the burden of proving it.
But we do have a way to modify it where you can't ask for a variance for a leach field.
Well, the answer is, you know, this is part of showing the septic variance by, by it.
That's all.
Unvariable. We'll figure that out.
Make, yeah, make the leach field an absolute, that it's, because I, I don't know about the rest of the commissioners, but I'm tired, I mean, every commission meeting, we've got a variance request.
I'm tired of it too. I know, gee, I've heard this, you know this, but just in our recent dealings with a whole different topic that he touched on the issue of septic consumer being here being big and whatnot. This is the third rail of Bella Vista, you know, you heard about the third rail of politics and it's when everybody touches it, it just turns into a cataclysm. And I fear that this is the third rail of Bella Vista and we, we're headed toward a, we're just headed towards something to Bella Vista, something's going to have to give. Either the houses, the lots are not right, the houses are too big, the sewer is not right, something, and it's, you can see it dwindling down to this point, and I don't know when we get there, but.
Well, I mean, we cleared the way to allow people to build their septic system on one lot and build their house on another lot, so we would clear that path for them. So all we're saying now is wherever your leach field's at, that's what it shall be, you sell me the code and we're not going to waive, we're not going to offer variance on it. I mean, the other, or it's going to be the other thing, Jason, which you know what it is, if somebody's going to come to us with a variance, we're going to deny it because we're not going to grant a variance on a septic, on a leach field, and then they're going to have no choice, like you said, it's a $200,000 house, half million dollar house or whatever, they're going to have to sue us and you're going to have to go argue and try to.
And I may have to do that, but, and I will do that if I have to.
Right, but I would prefer it to be based off of a code, you know, saying you cannot ask for the variance, let them challenge validity of the code versus challenge the determination of this body. That's me speaking, not, I know we have one attorney that sits on our commission and we've got, we've got a real estate agent, we've got a P O A board member, we've got city, we've got city employees and consultants and.
I think the more we hear these variances, the, it's going to increase the likelihood that we make an arbitrary decision.
That's, I agree.
The fault I had sent here, what can be built and done in Bella Vista by the rules? I mean, what, someone is always going to come get administrative adjustment or you or something, it seems like an every single thing. And so that's a broader question, are we trying to do too much, you know, with some of those?
Well, you know, that, you're right, that's a big question about the housing and about urban sprawl, and you're getting into big, you know, things. Like I said, I think we're, you know, trying to land somewhere here in the middle, we've, we've cleared one path for, I think, that would deal with a lot of the variances, the whole quarter lot thing, if we address that, that will take care of a lot of the other ones. I just, I want it to be very, very clear to these builders from day one, don't come asking because you can't ask. This is, this is what you have available to you, if you can't work with this toolbox anymore, go build a home on a sewered lot. And, and I, that's all I'm asking because I think Clay was right, the more we wave it, we weigh into this and our council chooses not to do anything about it, we, we're, you're going to have to go to court to defend this board's decision.
I understand.
And like I said, I would rather it be somebody challenging an ordinance versus challenging the board of adjustments determination.
Right, I agree with that, I do agree with that, I just, I, I'll leave it at that.
All we're asking you is that if you would dive into that and see if you can figure something out that our council would be okay with also.
No, it's, and this is not a statement of our council, or any members on our council, it's just a general statement. When they meet once a month and it's, it's a topic of a lot of discussion, it's a six, seven, eight month process. And somehow we've got to bring deliberations more speed to not, not to, we need to deliberate, we've got to be able to move more nimbly on some of these things because we're getting run around, you know, they're just running circles around us and we're like, well, maybe we ought to.
Well, I mean, I think, I mean, I'm one commissioner, but I mean, we, I feel like we've dealt with a fair amount of what we've been dealing with as far as variances. And I'm, like I said, I'm one commissioner, but I'm publicly saying, I'm never going to vote yes for a variance on a leach field. It just, it's, I will not ever do that. And the press is here, they can report on that, you all can call the Gazette tomorrow and tell them that I said that because it's a public health safety issue, in my opinion.
Very crisis in the septic industry.
So, I mean.
More and more likely.
Yeah, but I would like to just at least put a ordinance forward saying that applying for variance on a leach field is not something that can be done. Now, if council chooses not to do it, then I'll keep voting away, I'm going to vote till the mayor removes me.
That would make some sense to make it easier to combine lots.
We, we have asked that question and because of the legality of the P O A, the A C C, keeping track of dues, we are never going to be able to do lot combinations, it's just, you want to talk, that's the third rail, quite honestly.
The group easement that lies between the lots, that's really, I mean, I have talked to council for the P O A about the dues and the per lot assessments, they think they could get beyond that if we combined a lot. That's, so that, that, if it was just that, I think we could probably clear that hurdle. But you've got the developer with a retained easement between and on every lot that has to, that will be in position of having to bless them. Of course, they already do for people who are building a structure on top of the line, they, they should be getting those easements eliminated and I'm sure there's a cost that they, that's a business opportunity for the developer, but it needs to be done also. We need to find some easier way to deal with it. And every place in America that I know of would combine lots and never allow construction on two lots, to my knowledge, and we cannot get it done here and I.
I, I mean, I guess Mr. Attorney, which way do you want to go?
So that's me. It's a, it's one of these troubling things in terms of how it's regulated, but for the people that live here, it's not really a day to day crisis because they've already got their house and, okay, they don't see it as being that big of a thing and it takes a lot of momentum to move a boulder that big in Bella Vista. And where do we want to put that effort? From that, we're going to deal with sewer because we've got about, we can do about one thing at a time in terms of big stuff in order to be able to keep things going and.
I, I, like I said, I think short term, the easiest thing for us is we've cleared a couple of hurdles that we don't have to deal with anymore by just kind of interpreting our ordinance. If staff will look at a way of really making it difficult to apply for variance.
I think the order to have an ordinance that says that, that leach fields are not subject to variance pursuant to the regulations, that's one that we need to come here for public hearing before, you know, so that's something's going to come back to you before that, go to council.
I think you.
We're asking, we're asking staff to, to look at that. Yes, ma'am.
I just have a clarification question. So when you say leach field should not be subject to variance, I just want to make sure, so even in instances where a variance would be required to cross a rear property line into the common property because a house field has been damaged or destroyed, needs replaced and to be extended in the common property, you don't even want to see things like that?
I, I think we've already addressed that, we said if the leach field's moved to a separate lot, they need to let, run a hard line, and that's not, that's plumbing, not a leach field.
No, I mean, like the whole leach field, like we had a couple of months ago.
But that leach field was put in a different lot.
It was put on the common property?
It was a, it was a failure.
I, I think that's a very unique situation that as a commission, we're going to have to look at and really evaluate.
So you would, you would want to see those in a variant, like you would want to review those in a variance?
I, I don't know.
Have that for.
I would be too comfortable, but it might be more to see looking at, say, you can't, the sewer or the septic system has to be on the same block of the structure. And you want to talk about practically reducing the size of houses.
Yeah, I.
That's not going to happen in Bella Vista because of the, it's too much interest and you can't begin, but.
That, that will never, that will never see the light of day.
I understand, but we're having fair, how do we bend the rules? Let me let everybody do what they need and want, that's how it seems.
I don't think that's what I've been saying at all, we're, we're saying, treating the hard line as plumbing, we're looking at the public health, safety, and welfare, which is the leach field in my opinion, and the tank, and saying, we need to get out of the business of granting variances on the leach field. Because that's the part that is the system, that's the part that if installed improperly will fail and can lead to sewage discharging out of the ground.
You know, something that I might have previously that may be useful in some of these discussions is to have a joint planning condition city council work session.
That's what I was going to.
And you can sit around, I mean, we can put them, every, all of you together with all of them and you can share the, you know, help them understand what you're saying, you'll get a feeling for what they're trying to deal with and then try to solve some issues because we're, I mean, we can communicate that to the council, through the mayor, but there's a lot lost, certainly that translation.
We can have those all the time in Texas.
They're not seeing everything you see and.
We're, we're happy to do that at any time, no, actually, we, you know, this is my one commissioner, I'm not trying to get heavy handed and say that we'll only do one and two bedroom homes throughout Bella Vista, because I don't think that's the intent of anybody. But like I said, at the same time, you know, there are some things that I don't think the health department's going to waive and we really shouldn't be either, and that's encroaching into the leach field.
I just know from the council that there, there's one or more that want to have some serious discussion about the septic issue in general and that's a bigger issue.
Yeah, that's, that's a much, that's a much bigger issue, I just want to get out of the business of granting variances on leach fields, that's all I want to do. I don't, I'm not asking to change the ordinance, I just don't want to, I don't want to be having to reevaluate the ordinance every month because I, it does make me nervous that we will be arbitrary at some point inadvertently and.
If we are arbitrary, it should be arbitrary.
Yes. We just want to let the builders know, we're trying to work with you, but there's just a couple of things that are no go. And take your leach field seriously. That's all we're asking. Instead of trying to make an example out of one builder, which we almost did tonight, letting them know upfront, say, look, we've tried, now you need to try.
I'm strongly encouraging Mr. Chairman to call the mayor and council members to communicate that.
Oh, believe me, I would be happy to do that.
And as you, just as an individual and others, I really do think that it would be useful to have a joint work meeting just to talk about where we are and things of any of that.
I think that would be great.
And to get on a page about kind of what you're looking at and what they're dealing with, because I think there's a, there's just.
I think, I think.
I see that there's a disjuncture.
Let's, let's get that scheduled.
Yeah, we were definitely going to get you guys together for some zoning code reform stuff, but we can add this to the list on its own thing. That's an update to you to share.
We'll leave the mayor to call them for the work, for the special work session. We'll work through some technical things, but, you know, of course, he's got to agree to it as well, I mean, this is me talking, you know, they've got to agree to it too, so.
Like I said.
We'll work on it.
Cool. And then a few policy changes we've asked you to look at.
Yes.
Can't wait to hear next month from you.
Y'all.
All right, anything else to open discussing, because it is way past bedtime.
I just.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to mention that I've been talking to the powers that be for almost ten years about lot combinations, back to Chris Sunnison's days, and I recently came across some notes when I met with the P O A attorney Doug McCash back in 2017, and he said.
You can invite them and their absence could be noted, or they can show up, you know, that's, you know, I don't want to sell any pressure.
And we can either pick a neutral location. Nobody likes the noisy roof in here.
If you're going to have a meeting that scale, we have a clear agenda and limited expectations.
Yes.
Okay.
It's past seven.
And that's, that's, obviously, you need to have.
I'm well aware of that, and I'm willing to help with that too.
I just have a small and fun date. It's about a reform. That is going to be on the agenda, city council, for approval of the contract, so.
Say that again.
The zoning code reform.
Yeah.
Is on, and development code reform is on track to be on the agenda next week, and so we are on track to starting this finally first week in September, so.
You all are going to be earning your paychecks over the next few months, is what Taylor.
For the next two years.
Do not, do not plan on short work sessions and short meetings.
Correct.
All right. All right. August 21st, the city council work session will happen at 5:30 PM. Regular meeting for the council will be on the 28th at 6:30. We will have a work session on August 31st at 4:30 PM, and we will have our regular meeting on September 11th at 4:30 PM. And Commissioner Lloyd has let me know that she will be absent from our August 31st work session. She is not sure about our regular meeting yet.
I've rechecked my airplane reservations and probably will miss, be out of the country for both.
Okay.
I will also be out.
All right, so we have two.
We're going together.
I, I understand, so if you all are doing the math, at least.
We got to know.
Everybody else needs to be here for our regular meeting on the 11th.
Okay.
And if there are other five, we will not have a quarter, so. All right, with that, we stand adjourned. Thank you all for your effort tonight.